Good afternoon or good evening. We welcome you here to our West Valley City Council meeting. We'll call our meeting to order. I believe that we will have, we have some councilmen who have been out here to participate in a domestic violence awareness program. And they will all be here, but one will shortly join us. And here we are. With that, we declare we have a full core and present. All council members are here. We will have our opening ceremony and we will turn to Councilmember Tom Hyun to conduct that procedure.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it very much. Here, I want to invite all of you to stay now and do the blessing of the gentleman. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And there is no justice.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman Hyun. We do have some special recognitions of people tonight. We do have here with us a scout troop. Is it just one? We would invite one of your scouts to come forward and tell us three things. Your troop number, what schools you attend, and why you're here. What you're working on. Do we have more than one, or is this all one?
All one.
All one, okay. And I see someone has been elected.
Mr. Mayor and members of the city council, my name is Sam Bray. And I'm the senior portfolio of Troops 662, 672, and 913 in the area of 4,100 south to 4,500 south, and 41, 45 west, and 4,800 west. We're here for the communications, Mayor Vaj, and we thank you for letting us be here.
Thank you. Welcome for, to our council meeting and hope you enjoy it. It's, looks like it might be an interesting meeting. This is more people than we usually have, and not just scouts.
Tell them what schools.
What schools do you attend?
Academy Park and Kennedy Junior.
All right. Thank you very much. Next, we have on our agenda approval of our minutes. We have two weeks' worth of minutes to approve September 16th and September 23rd to the council end. Councilman Nordfeld.
Mayor, move for approval of our minutes from the September 16th and September 23rd meetings.
Do we have the motion before us? Do we have a second?
Second.
Councilwoman Lang has the second. The motion is before us. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll vote on the approval of the minutes. All in favor of approving the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion passes unanimously. The minutes of September 16th and September 23rd are approved. We will now do, go to the next segment of our meeting, which are award ceremonies, proclamations. We do have a proclamation, and I am going to read that here. This one is a proclamation recognizing the month of October 2014 as National Domestic Violence Awareness Month. And I'm going to change it just a little bit. I usually read the whereas's and I'm not going to this time. So, "The month of October is National Domestic Violence Awareness Month. We ask that those who are survivors and victims of domestic violence homicides be remembered. The lives of women, men, and children, extended family, and communities continue to be negatively impacted by domestic violence. The crime of domestic violence is not confined to any group or groups of people, but crosses all racial and socioeconomic segments of our society. Domestic violence hurts everyone. We as a community must recognize the scope of this social problem and work together to create a community which does not tolerate domestic violence. It is up to us as a community to teach our children and to expand the awareness of domestic violence by education, prevention, and outreach. We encourage all West Valley residents to take a stand against domestic violence in their personal relationships and in their community. Now therefore, we, the mayor and city council of West Valley City, Utah, do hereby proclaim and recognize October 2014 as National Domestic Violence Awareness Month." Thank you. Next, we go to that portion of our... We come to the public comment period of our meeting. Some of you have signed up on this form in order to speak. By our rules, individuals are limited to five minutes each for a total of 30 minutes. So, since there are more than six here, if the first six take five minutes each, we will not hear from all of you. If any of you have come to speak on an item that is a public input item, we have a public hearing on our budget and on our temporary land use regulation regarding rezoning of property. If you are here to speak on those and you sign this, please do not speak during the public comment period. We will have a separate one to deal with those two issues, but they must be only to those two issues. The free-for-all, any issue goes, is what we will now solve. So, the public comments, we begin with, and it's my opportunity to try and decipher these. Jim Belfa?
It's DeFei on the moratorium.
Oh, you're on the moratorium? Okay, so we'll have you wait. Paul Nichols?
I'm talking to Chief Pliss.
You're okay. Robert Deffa?
It's Deefe. I actually didn't read it. I thought it was a roll call deal.
Oh, okay. Well, then we won't call on you. This is going very quickly. Kim LaFever?
I also want to speak on the moratorium.
Okay, thank you. Then Chris Jacktett?
Yes, on the land use.
Land use, okay. Elliot Mott?
Moratorium.
Moratorium, okay. We've got a bunch for that. Mary Jane Davis. And, moratorium?
Newton Davis.
Newton Davis, okay.
And I'm just a moratorium.
Tony Jackets?
On the moratorium.
Moratorium, yeah, okay. Adam Smart?
Aye.
Moratorium. And I guess there was a Robert. Now, this is a Richard now.
Thank you. We're going to call you.
Okay. Well, then there's no one for public comment. Any comments or information from our city manager?
No, sir, thank you.
City council comments? Councilman Ruston?
Thank you, Mayor. And those of you that came in tonight noticed the short program going on in the hallway and just want to give a shout out to our victim advocate staff as well as Mayor Police Chief and City Prosecutor for their participating in this awareness of domestic violence and with our taking of action of proclaiming this night as a, proclaiming this night, this night we are proclaiming the month of October to be domestic violence awareness. And one of the things that I was contacted this week by a few constituents was in response to a lot of media attention regarding the processing of evidence and specifically rape kits that go unprocessed. And so I was pleased and I wanted to also give congratulations to our chief for being very proactive and for West Valley City having all of their kits processed during the process of the process. And so, something that I was intending on talking about tonight, but you know, the police chief actually beat us to it. And so, I think that I just wanted to give a congratulations and keep up the good work to those people in our city that are employed to help protect us and to keep us safe. That's all, Mayor.
Thank you. Any further comments? Okay, then we will move on to the next item on our agenda. And this is to accept public input regarding the reopening of our 2014-2015 budget. And so, we will declare open the public hearing portion of this item. Is there anyone here to speak to this issue? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing portion on ordinance number 1437, the amending of the budget. That is now closed. This is a pretty straightforward item, but with some technical changes and some minor adjustments, I don't, that's probably why there's no one here to speak with. So, any further comments from the council? Then to the council?
Mayor, let me do it.
Thank you, Mayor. Move for approval of ordinance 1437.
Thank you. We have the motion before us from Councilman Giller. Do we have a second?
Second.
Councilman Hyun has the second. The motion is properly before us regarding our budget. Any further discussion or comment? Seeing none, we will place it for a vote. All in favor of approving ordinance number 14-37, amending the budget for West Valley City for our current fiscal year, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion passes unanimously. Next, we have on our agenda a public input or hearing for ordinance number 14-38, enacting a temporary land use regulation regarding the rezoning of property, or, as some of you have indicated, a moratorium. So this will be the one where you will want to come forward and speak. So we will now declare open the public input portion for this ordinance. Now, we had a number of people who indicated, and I'm, since you signed up, we'll just call on you in that order. First was Jim, or Vincent?
Mayor, I'm just wondering if this, it wouldn't be appropriate at this time to have staff give us an overview of what this really, what this ordinance would be.
Okay, we can do this. Mr. Pyle?
Thank you, sir. Yeah, and I'll be brief and take just a couple of minutes, but yeah, it might be helpful for both reminding the council of purposes of moratoriums and these land use regulations as we doubt them, and also for anybody in the audience that, that might not know to get a better feel for what their purpose are and what, what their purposes are generally and what specifically we're trying to accomplish in this scenario here. So, I know I said it's, speak briefly, but let me give you a quick history of what moratoriums are used for. Moratoriums can be used under Utah state law for various purposes in land use development. The specific purpose of what we're talking to tonight has been used probably, I don't know, two or three times in my tenure at least here at the city. And when we do those, we do these for, or we consider these for the very specific, a specific purpose of actually gathering all points of view, all interested parties, input and information on what is going on with, what of a particular subject is at the time concerning land use. And in this particular instance, we are proposing to do this on a residential basis. And the reason for that, as council knows from previous conversation, is we have very limited amount of space left in the city and we have a very specific number of parcels of significant sizes in the city. And we have very unique characteristics and circumstances in each one of those parcels that we as staff feel like from a recommendation standpoint would be both in the interest of the city overall, its citizens, the council is there making very important decisions, developers and property owners to make sure that the best use and best consideration of those properties can be done. So, to that point, a moratorium is for that use. A moratorium sometimes is misunderstood as being a tool to block development or stop consideration of property ownership transfer for development purposes. That is simply not the case, and especially as West Valley has used those, that tool in the past and is considering using that tool at this time. What we are really trying to do here is make sure that each of those specific parcels and residential use generally throughout the city is conducted in the, in the best manner to the highest use that is available with the remaining property we have in the city and that it is done in a way that it is improving both overall the character of the city and the quality of the city and the residential developments that are within that. So with that, Mayor, I'll turn over the time back to you unless there are staff questions as well from an introduction standpoint.
I think I would add to that, that based upon the information that I have, there are only four areas in the city where there are parcels of ground, not parcels, but areas where there are more than 20 acres. So, there are not a lot of these large areas of the city that have not been developed. And so, we're not talking a huge number, although within those areas, there may be more than one owner or parcel of different sizes. There are a lot of small ones, you know, a couple of acres here and there that might suffice for a home or two. But my understanding, and one of the things that we mentioned was that we wanted to make sure that although a moratorium can last up to six months, that we do all we can to make it a shorter period. I understand the staff has already met with developers who play a key role in this discussion and have talked with them and gotten feedback. So the staff is acting on this in a fairly aggressive manner. It's not that they're trying to delay it. They're trying to accomplish what the council is asking them to do in certainly an appropriate amount of time, but they're doing it as quickly as they can. So, I think that all of these items, and there were a couple of projects brought before us that this affected initially, and those were not, that the intent was not that those just not be developed. I think the question was how do we do these in a coordinated effort, especially since we're down to the very last few. And so, that is what is happening here. And certainly, we want input from the public and we look forward to that as well. So, anything else from the council? Any comments you want to make? Okay, then, I was actually going to do that after because that's where it appears in here. So, but that's okay. Whatever the council wants, that's what we do. So now we go to our public input. That is open. We invite you to come forward and if you would like to do it in that same order, Jim Deffa?
DeFei.
DeFei. Now, you'll tell me again and I'll still get it. Sorry. You'll get the notice.
Thank you very much for the opportunity to come tonight. We're here to, or at least I'm here to get more information on, on the term. And the basic information that I got was out of the newspaper article. And unfortunately, words like moratorium and that kind of thing don't bode well for people who own property, which we do. And in one of those four sections that you're talking about, my family's been here since the 1930s, farmland out there. We, we have a much smaller parcel than what we did before, but it, it's our property. We've taken care of it. We've paid the property tax, farmed out there. And so, the expectation or the thought process that somebody's going to come in and tell us that we can't do what we want with that property going forward, whether it is development or maintaining the farm or the green belt, that's, that's not acceptable to us. So we're, we're here to, to learn a little bit more about this. What is the plan? I mean, we're not totally against anything happening, but we'd like to be able to be involved and talk about it, be part of the process. And you use the words developers, they're not the only ones involved in this. So, you know, that's something that we need to be made clear, that when we start talking about this, the ultimate total value of the property at this point, in my opinion, is for development. That's the highest value of the property. And if anything changes that, or changes so we can't exercise that if we choose to, we're going to have some issues about that. So, again, we're just wanting the opportunity to be involved. Talking to Nicole and we'll, we'll sit down to talk about it, but I want to make sure that everybody's clear that we have some problems with the terminology that we've seen. Thank you.
For purposes of clarification, when I referred to developers, that was not exclusive, but that was to say the process had started. I had not gotten information about meetings with the public, but I, that is expected and required to take place. And I think that, Mr. Pyle, you're already working on that.
Yes, that's right, sir. In fact, some meetings with some of the property owners that are involved in these discussions have been held, and we certainly are always open to meetings with property owners as well. We're also respectful of and considerate of the relationship the property owners and their development partners have, so we want to make sure that we respect that and carry that out correctly. But your comment is exactly right, Mayor, and we're certainly not by design speaking only developers and excluding property owners. We're, we're glad to speak with them and are already having those conversations.
In fact, I, I want to commend those who've come tonight. We're glad you came, and we want to hear from you. This is not an exclusive process. It's an inclusive process. We want participation. Next, we have Kim LaFever?
Mr. Mayor and council, I guess my concern is, is I live in the area where there is open spaces that is going to be designated for future development. And I too want to make sure that I'm involved in that process. I built my home in West Valley 30 years ago, and in the area that I built my home, it was deemed agriculture. And that, at the time that I built my home, the master plan said it would remain, which is changing and affecting my lifestyle and my property value. The area in which I live now, the development and the approachment of more people in progress, where I live, I now live in front of a freeway. I can't get any relief from that, and I think we need to take a step back and, and see how it's going to affect not just the property owners, but the people that live in that area also. I mean, I don't want to live in a city. That's why I bought my property where I did 30 years ago. So I, I don't know that I'm informed with everything that's going to take place, and I guess I just want to make sure that I too am included in the plans for the future and how we're going to alleviate like the traffic in my area and, and the congestion in my area that's already there. And we're already talking about future development. So, you know, I, I just want to make sure that people that aren't just property owners that's in question, but the people that live in those areas also have a voice. That's it.
Thank you. Next was Chris Jacktett?
Hi, Mr. Mayor and council. I bring you greetings from West, West Valley. I'm glad we were giving the opportunity to give you our input. We were invited last spring to come in and work on a master plan. We had four different maps that we worked on and we looked at what our spaces look like now and what they could look like in the future. And that's kind of how we got together with our neighbors because we're a little farther separated. And so, by them coming to that master plan meeting, we were able to do that. We liked what we heard of master plan, or I'm for the moratorium while we just, I'll take a step back and just kind of decide what works for us in West Valley. Once, once we're developed, we're developed and that, that's that. So I think if we can just give everything a, a clear, fair view, it's in everyone's best interest. And I'd also like that, the planning commission, the council, to remember that when Mountain View goes through there, that's a good boundary to say, okay, everything west of that is kind of down home and old fashioned. And so, those are my comments and thank you for listening.
Thank you. Let's see, Elliot Mott?
Mr. Mayor, council, good evening. Thank you for this time. I'm here to advocate for open space. As it connects to your moratorium, I would like to see that extended to all of them, with the concept being to preserve open space that is available. In my mind, in a fast-growing urban scape, open space is the highest and best use. We're fast writing out open space here. Second point I would like to make is the connectivity between open space and homeless people. You have a wonderful river corridor on your western, or on your eastern boundary, which I suspect at any given time, there are maybe a dozen or so people living there. The temptation is to develop over that space as a remedy. On that thought, think of New York City and the value Central Park brings to that community. What a shame it would be to pave over that park. I suspect there are upwards of 100 people living there at any given time as a remedy to get rid of them. I think the park brings tremendous value to that cityscape, as does the Jordan River corridor here and some of the other open space corridor, or open space parcels that we are discussing here tonight. So in sum, I'm advocating for preservation of open space in West Valley City to the maximum extent possible. Thank you very much for this time.
Thank you. Next, Mary Jane Newton Davis?
Good evening, Mayor, council members. You may be tired of hearing from me. You've heard from me several times before. As a lifelong member of West Valley City, formerly Hunter, and having a history in the city, because my family has been here from the 1870s, I've already told you that other times, I speak for my family when we tell you again that we support open space in every way possible. If we could maintain our property as open space, we would do so. I have tried, as you recall me telling you, many times to write grants. I have talked to everyone who would listen to me. It's difficult for us to do that. So I think what my family wants to say to our neighbors and to you is thank you for being careful enough to enact a moratorium, enact in our best interest, because we want something upscale. If we have to give up our open space, there, there are no farmers. That horse got out of the barn 20 years ago and went down the freeway, pony's wagon. We would love to farm. It's most difficult for us. So thank you. Please be aware that we want to be involved in every minute of your process, that we want to know every step of the way, that you consider what is best for our neighborhood and for our family as well, because there are family dynamics sometimes that come into not only maintaining the open space, but developing, developing that space as well. but developing that space as well. And I'm with Mr. Mott. We need open space. But do the best you can with that and do the best for those who cannot maintain that open space. And we're with you every step of the way. I'm grateful to you to letting me have this time to remind you of our family and our commitment to the city. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Tony Chiketa. Okay, Adam Smart. Okay. Anyone else who wants to speak to this issue?
Mr. Mayor, may I?
Please come forward. No, you didn't have to sign up for this portion.
My name is Billy Burke. It rhymes with jerk, so it's easy to remember. Remember what I told you? I happen to be involved in the formation of West Valley City many years ago. We didn't have those plush chairs over there across at the mall. You've got a problem on your hands because the paper says that you're going to have three million more people in Salt Lake County in the next few years. Where are you going to put them? We used to go across the plains of Oklahoma staking out one-square-mile areas for our own. Those days are over. So, what I have heard tonight, you better get your boxing gloves on. I think you've got a problem, but it's one that can be solved. What we've got to learn is that we're living in a life of change. Change is the only thing that's constant. And we are about to see a real change. A young lady complained about the traffic. That guy I'm sitting with over here, he said that we could stop domestic violence if we could get women to stop talking back. But, Mr. Nichols, you could get in trouble saying things like that. What we need to do is be included. Has been expressed tonight. Because builders, developers, whatever you want to call them, they meet with you people on the master plan. And some of us don't like attending all these meetings. But a developer will... If his mouth is moving, he's usually lying to you. So, keep that in mind and include these people. Listen to their stories. But have your boxing gloves on, because I can see trouble coming down the road. Thank you.
Thank you. That take care of everyone. Seeing no more arms waving. This is your last chance, because we're going to close the public hearings. Okay. You would come forward.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Councilman. And first of all, I was here a few weeks ago. And I apologize for my behavior to the mayor and the councilmen. I was...
Sir, I'm sorry to interrupt. Can we get your name and...
Oh, sure. Frank Newton, cousin to Mary Jane and Bill.
How come you laugh when you say that?
Anyway, but I apologize for my behavior a few weeks ago. And I appreciate what the council is doing. It is a difficult decision. And I wish I had all the answers for development and a good balance between development and open space. I don't... But I appreciate the opportunity to be included in the process. Thank you.
Thank you. There's another one?
Art Bracha. I'm one of your neighbors. Anyway, when I first moved in here and talked about building West Valley, I says a good plan for the city would make sure that they had the adequate places for parks, golf courses, some people like that. And just plain open area. It gets a lot to hunt, but I wouldn't say have an open area to go hunting for all some of the pheasants they have around here, but... Or somebody else. But, yeah, just four twenty-acre lots, that's only a quarter of a square mile. So, you're really running out fast. So, if you want to save any of your parks for your futures, for your schools, for your churches, for all the needs of everybody, plan well. And that's the only thing I wanted to say is that we're... You want to keep everything in mind so everybody can have what they expect to see. Thank you.
Thank you. Looks like we have one more.
It's always those people that sit on the back row.
Sorry about that. Mr. Mayor and Council, thank you. I'm Tony Chiketa. Signed that before. I have a small piece of ground. And I can't grow anything on it except weeds. And I would like to develop it, but I'm unable to on several reasons. But I just want you to know that I would like to be involved in what you're talking. And I'm against your moratorium. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. With that then, we will declare the public hearing portion closed. We now come back to the council for discussion and comment. Councilman Rushton.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll try to be brief here, but it might be a little difficult as, you know, there's a lot of good points raised tonight. And I guess I want to know what the magic word is that brought out all of my favorite West Valley City residents tonight. Because I want the council to take a look at, you know, this group. Because I think the people that spoke here today are the people that I converse with, that I email, that I phone call, and I talk to and helped me to do the best that I can to serve this city. And I appreciate them coming tonight. It's good to see all of them. It's one... Some of them we've seen at different points of time that have come to ask us to be careful with their city. Because I know that they all love our city as much as we love our city and as much as I love our city and how much we want the absolute best for it. You know, I think as we talk about where did this moratorium come from, it really stemmed from the fact that right now we are going through a process of updating our general plan. And I think some of you indicated tonight that you've been to some of those meetings. And you've came and sat around the tables with some of our planning staff and talked about the vision and the future of our city. And I think that it was really hard for myself, as well as the other members of the city council, to know that there were planning meetings going on on Wednesdays and Thursdays to talk about Fifty-Six-Hundred West, the Mountain View Corridor, Redwood Road, the Jordan River, all these different sections of our city. And then on Tuesdays, we were rezoning the city, having no clue what was going on in those meetings. And it felt somewhat a little disingenuous that we were trying to uphold the will of the people here as they're out speaking and having their voices heard. And in our meetings on Tuesday, that we... Maybe we're doing things you wanted and maybe we were doing things you didn't want us to do. And so, I think with that, that it's the twofold thing. And the first thing was, is, yeah, we just want to gather all the information. I think putting a hold on things is a simple way of saying, "We need information. We want more information. Give us all the information that we can get as we continue to plan our city." Second thing is, as mentioned, there's a few people here that have properties that are maybe a little more eminent to be developed than others. But we, as a city, just don't want to just have it piecemeal planned or just kind of be thrown together or happen. Is that we want to direct our city staff and all those that work for the city to employ all the tools at our disposal and all the resources at our city's disposal to help you owners receive the highest and best use of your land. And, you know, we've done that really effectively as you walk outside and look at the mall and you look at some of the other development projects we've done in the city, that, you know, we've spent some money tonight. In our redevelopment agency, we'll talk about some places, we've spent some money and drawn up some plans and give and take with certain businesses and industries to locate in our city. And we want to use some of those same tools, those same resources, those same man-hours to help you develop your property to its highest and best use. Because, Mr. Burke, we're going to have a lot of people in our city at some point. And we want to be able to plan to not only accommodate those people, but also to plan to maintain the high quality of life that we enjoy here in West Valley City. And, you know, it was mentioned early on through the process, I think Mr. DeFei mentioned that he doesn't want the city to tell him what to do with his property. And I don't think we... Moratorium is what we want to tell you what to do with it. But again, we want to give you the tools to try to help you and help us as a city council make the best decisions for all interested parties. And Mary Jane and Frank, thanks for being here tonight. Again, I know it probably would have been real easy to stay home tonight and just be frustrated and curse us on WVC TV as we go through some of these processes. But I know that you love our city and want the best for it. And I promise you that we, as a city council and city staff, are going to do everything that we can to make you proud and make your property be a real asset and real cornerstone of our city for years to come. Final thing that I'll say before we go this is, Mr. Mott had brought up a portion of the Jordan River. And I just wanted to be on record and tell him that it is certainly a special part of our city. And I don't anticipate us ever pouring asphalt up to the edge of the river. And that we're going to do, try to take as many steps as possible to try to preserve that feature in our city and make it a real asset to the community. But we're going to need some help on that section. As you know, the river's been largely ignored and largely ignored in our section of the city, as well as some of our neighboring cities. But those things will change, and we will need your support to continue to make that happen. But again, I just want to thank everybody for coming tonight and giving us input. And we're going to need plenty more of it as this moratorium goes into, I don't know if it's going to be a month or two months. I certainly don't anticipate it being to full six months. But certainly will take as much time as possible to be able to take all the input that you have, as well as to be respectful of our strategic plan process. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Benson.
I just want to say amen to what Cory said. You know, three weeks ago, I was at a Lions Club breakfast and had the pleasure to have Mr. Billy Burke sit me down on a park bench out there at Hunter Park and spend an hour with me, giving me a history of the city. And I appreciated that. And it's people like him and his family and his relatives that need to have input on what this city should look like as we go forward. And that's precisely what this moratorium will do. Allow us to gather input and to do those things that are best for the city as we move forward and to do those things that are right, rather than doing piece by piece by piece and doing the same thing over and over again. So, we want to make sure that we do it right. And I appreciate the time that I get when I get to talk to these residents that their families settled the area and have a long history here. It's valuable. We don't want to lose that character and the touch of those families that have been here. So, it is our opportunity right now to gather that information from each of these families and property owners and make sure that we do the right thing as we move forward.
Thank you. We let Mr. Burke have his one outburst earlier, but officially, we, in order to maintain decorum, we don't allow public...
I apologize. I couldn't hold back.
Well, I'll get back to you in a minute. I'd leave you on suspense. Other comments? I do have some I'll add at the end of this. And seeing... Oh, wait a minute. We do have more. Councilwoman Lang.
They're walking out. But I was just going to comment, agree with Cory, and bring up that, you know, the people like the Newtons and the Fae's that are really... And a lot of other, you know, names that have been here a long time. They really do care what's going to happen to their property. And I know Mary Jane personally has solicited trying to get other people to use their property for agricultural uses. And they have been invested and want the best for our city. So, I appreciate the citizens who really are looking out for the city's best interest.
Thank you. Several items here. Yes, Mr. Billy Burke is an interesting fellow. I worked with him in Lions Club a few years ago. I was hoping when he said, "Were we going to put those three million?" that he was planning on volunteering to take them on his property. But that is not likely. Second comment, we actually have put some asphalt up to the Jordan River. It's called the tradehouse. Well, there are some there. So, on this issue, I think one of the concerns as we look at this, and as I know as I was faced with this as a new member of the council, this is my first year on the council, we were looking at developing a couple of parcels. These parcels were part of a larger area that was vacant property. And as we typically do, we raise the issue of park space, a little bit of green space. That's kind of a, you know, something that we do as we have been developing our city is looking for opportunities to have local neighborhood parks. Well, as that discussion went on, one of the questions was, we're developing two of the parcels. There were some other parcels there. And we were asking these particular property owners to take on the burden of a park. The city doesn't have money to go out and pay for all that land and just turn it into green space. I wish we could, wish we had that much. But if we did, you'd probably make us lower taxes because, you know, we'd have a lot, because it would take a lot. So, stepping back for a minute to say, wait a minute. If we're going to have a park, how is that developed in conjunction with all of those that are there? What type of development will happen? How will this affect traffic? We're down to the last few. And as I've talked personally with UDOT, even as recently as yesterday, about traffic and how we get it to move, they pointed out in West Valley that we have a lot of good arteries that go north and south. We have fewer that go east and west. And they said, "Why don't you put some roads in there?" I said, "No, because they're right through the middle of subdivisions, and we would take out a whole bunch of homes to do that." And so, your council is having to face issues like that of how do we deal with traffic? How do we deal with development? Because when someone develops their property, it just doesn't affect them. It affects their neighbors. Just as the individual who spoke earlier about, you know, they came out here, this was an agricultural area. When I moved here, and that wasn't that long ago, thirty-seven years, it was almost all farms or horse pastures. And it was a very agricultural area. Now, it's almost all city. And so, we're tasked, and this is your assignment to us, to say, "Do it and do it well. Don't do it haphazardly. Don't do it poorly. Regardless of what's happened in the past, do the best you can right now." Well, in order to do that, we need more information, especially as we get down to this final point. Is our intent to say, "No, you can't develop your land. You're going to have to leave it agricultural and let it grow weeds." Well, the answer is no. We've allowed others to develop, and we will undoubtedly allow these parcels to be developed. in some way. But we would like to do it in the best way we can that will be beneficial to you as a property owner, those of you who own the property, as well as your neighbors, and as well to the benefit of our city. So we're trying to weigh all of those, and those things don't happen in a one-hour meeting or a two-hour meeting. It takes some time. We just want to make sure we get it right. And we've been trying to modify things, to improve them for what we think is the benefit of the city. And we realized that we're getting to that point where we needed to step back. At first, I really questioned the moratorium, because I'm not a real fan of them, but because I've seen them used in negative ways over the years. I don't think that is the case here. I think that this will be used wisely to give us a chance to get input, not in five-minute or three-minute or two-minute segments that you have here to speak, but rather to say, "Let's have some time to sit down together and discuss it." So our staff is going to lead that effort, they're going to gather that information, give us feedback. Some of the council members may be involved in those meetings as well and with you. You're certainly welcome to bend the ear of any council member here, they will be happy to hear them, because there aren't that many that call. So getting your input will be very valuable. So first of all, thank you for being here, and stay tuned, because this is a developing process. It will evolve as we get that feedback. Yes, we included developers. Yes, we're including property owners. Yes, we want to include neighboring people who own property near but not in these developing areas, and say, "How do we get it right?" Because as elected officials, that's what you've tasked us to do, and so we will work on that, we will do our best. And it's not going to happen real quickly, but I hope less than six months, given the smaller nature of the property left. We happen to have some work going on on our general plan as well, and we're going to kind of have some discussions, I think, on that and how it all ties together. So thank you for coming tonight and participating in this, we appreciate your feedback. You know, the cost of open space unfortunately is high now, and I know we would love to have it later, but as a city, we're tasked to spend those dollars as efficiently and well as we can. And right now, we don't have, I don't think we have anywhere near the cash to take even those four parcels and buy them and keep them as green space. The property is just too valuable to be able to do that for development and for people who want to live here in the city. Those three million people, not all of them will come to West Valley, but I'll bet a number of them do. So just some real challenges we face, so stay tuned and stay participating. It's one thing to come here tonight, but if you want to have real impact, if you really want to make a difference, that's come to those meetings where the discussions take place. That's where you need to be and give us that feedback. Well, thank you for listening to those comments. We will come back to the council then for further discussion or action.
Mayor, I will move for approval of ordinance 14-38.
We have the motion before us from Councilman Rushton.
Second.
We have a second, Councilman Vincent the second. The motion is properly before us, further discussion to the motion. I have to keep looking back and forth, because sometimes I look one way and someone will raise a hand behind me. I'm not a school teacher, so I can't see behind me. So with that, seeing no further discussion, we will place motion 14-38 enacting a temporary land use regulation regarding rezoning of property within the city or a moratorium to the council for a vote. All in favor of this ordinance, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The motion passes unanimously, the ordinance is approved. We now move on to the next part of our agenda, which are resolutions. We'll begin with resolution 14-157. This is to approve a franchise agreement with a telecom company. These have, I think this was either the second or third one that we have. These are fairly routine, it gives them the right to establish their network in the city, and we've given it to others before, we have no reason not to approve it. In fact, next week, we'll actually do another one. Typically, these don't affect major portions of the city, but it's hard to tell. So that is the one that we have before us, fairly routine item. Any further comments or discussion on this to the council? Councilwoman Lang.
Mayor, I move for approval of resolution 14-157.
We have a motion to approve from Councilwoman Lang. Do we have a second?
Second.
Councilman Vincent's the second, the motion is properly before us, further discussion? Seeing none, we'll place that for a vote. Those in favor of approving resolution 14-157 to approve a franchise agreement for telecommunications network in the city, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion passes unanimously. We now go to resolution 14-158 to approve a purchase of a Ford F-250 truck for the Public Works Department. This is coming before us, most of these are in a rotation to be purchased, we don't approve them individually normally, but this one exceeds the cap. They couldn't get a better bid than a little over $30,000, so this one must come to the council for approval, because it exceeds $30,000. Anything else on that? I think that covers it pretty well. It's a fairly routine replacement, it's coming to us though because of the cost. To the council. Councilman Vincent.
Mayor, I move for approval of resolution 14-158. And just note that it's always nice when we use a local dealer when we purchase these vehicles.
That's correct. Thank you, we have the motion before us, do we have a second? Councilman Bueller.
Thank you, Mayor, second motion.
That's the second. That motion is now properly before us. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll place that for a vote. All in favor of approving this purchase, resolution 14-158 for a Ford F-250 truck for the Public Works Department, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion passes unanimously. We now go to resolution 14-159. This is authorizing a contingency on a contract with Ace Construction. This is on the Glen Weaver Memorial Park. There are already some change orders there, this is in a park in an area of the city where there's some elevation chains, there are a number of unknowns, and rather than bringing those back, we're going to, in this case, approve some existing change orders and allow a contingency for future change orders on this particular park, which it is likely to be needed just because of the difficulty. There are a number of factors there, it's not a routine park based on the location and what is on property. That is the item, then to the council.
Motion to approve resolution 14-159.
Councilman Hune moves to approve this resolution. Do we have a second? Councilwoman Lang has the second on it. Any further discussion? For those of you who are here, we should remind you, if you think we're going fast, this is the second time that we have had a discussion on these items. Last week, we discussed each of these items in a study session, so if you think we're moving fast, it's not that we don't discuss it or go into detail, we have done that already. And then we give a week to let everyone ponder it, or people to come and give feedback during that time, and so I neglected to mention that when we started, so these are all items that we have heard before. So we have a motion and a second before us, seeing no further discussion, we'll place that for a vote. All in favor of approving resolution 14-159 for a 5% contingency to a construction contract on Glen Weaver Park, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion passes unanimously. Next, we go to resolution 14-160. This is to ratify the city manager's appointment of David McEwen as a member of West Valley City's Clean and Beautiful Committee. And we have had that before us, these are fairly routine appointments, we have the city manager identify and then just bring him for our review here. To the council then for prompt interaction.
Mayor.
Councilman Nordfeld.
I move for approval of resolution 14-160.
Councilman Nordfeld has made a motion to approve. Councilwoman Lang?
I would move for a second, and I would also like to just make a comment that our Clean and Beautiful Committee does quite a few service projects throughout the year within the city. The latest one is they cleaned up the weeds and all the flower beds at the animal shelter. So this is a committee that really gets in and does a lot of good work in the city.
Thank you, very appropriate comments. Any further comments with motion properly before us? Seeing none, we'll place that for a vote of the council. All in favor of resolution 14-160 to ratify the appointment of David McEwen as a member of the West Valley City Clean and Beautiful Committee, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion passes unanimously. That concludes the items on our city council agenda. I do not believe we have a need for an executive session. We, just for your information before we take a final motion in this meeting, we will now have two other very brief meetings following this for our redevelopment committee. Can I get them to get the names right? I don't have them in front of me. What's the other one? Housing Authority and Redevelopment, I think they're the two. Redevelopment, yet what?
Agency.
Agency. You'd think I'd have gotten that down by now when I happened. So thank you, scouts, for coming, hope you enjoyed your time here. We will then go immediately to those two meetings, they are brief by the way. I don't know, one has some discussion items on. So one last motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, non-abatable, all in favor of adjourned our city council meeting, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion pass unanimously, we are adjourned.
Okay, I will call to order the West Valley City, the regular meeting of this West Valley City Redevelopment Agency, and note that we've had an opening ceremony, and the roll call should state that all members are present. The first item of business we have is to approve the minutes of our September 2nd, 2014 regular meeting. Mr. Bueller.
Mr. Chair, move for approval of minutes.
Mr. Begalow.
I move to a second.
We have a live motion before the body to approve the minutes of the September 2nd, 2014 meeting as written. All those in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Those minutes are approved unanimously. Any communications or report of our chief executive officer tonight?
No, thanks, sir.
Okay. Mr. Baugh, will you please introduce the public hearing we have regarding receiving input on reopening our fiscal year 2014-2015 budget?
Absolutely, thank you, sir. As was demonstrated in the previous meeting, the RDA also has a quarterly budget opening for the year, and the public hearing will be for the purpose of receiving input to that budget opening.
Okay, now open the public hearing, has anyone come to discuss the reopening of the redevelopment agency's budget? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing and put the action item before the board for discussions or motions, questions. I believe there's only one item, and it's transfer of funds, which we probably want to do. Mrs. Lang.
Mr. Chair, I move for approval of resolution 14-15.
Mr. Begalow.
I move to rescind that motion.
Okay, we have a live motion before the agency to approve resolution 14-15 amending the budget, any discussion to that motion? Seeing none, we'll call the question and ask all those in favor to please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? That resolution passes unanimously. Now I'll turn the time back over to our chief executive officer to introduce resolution 14-16 for us, please.
Thank you, sir. This resolution would allow us to enter into an agreement to develop land or ADL with the entity that is developing Freeport West. This is an industrial, a new industrial commercial park on the northwest corner of the city, which will involve thousands of jobs literally, and literally millions of square feet of new development in that area, in an area which we very definitely can use that, will help to beautify the city as well as bring economic vitality to the city. We've been working on this for a number of years now, we've got Mr. Nord here at the front, who has spent a great deal of time bringing that deal to us at the city. I'd like to compliment him, as well as his boss, Nicole Cottle, and the economic development staff are doing that for us, sir, but we would recommend adoption of the agreement.
Okay. Agency, this matter is now before you for any questions you might have, or discussion items or motions.
Motion to approve resolution 14-16.
Mr. Hune, we have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Bueller, any discussion to the motion to approve resolution 14-16? Seeing none, I will also, just on behalf of the agency, give a congratulations and continue thanks to Mr. Nord for his work on this. I think many people make a career out of projects like this, but as we expect from him, that this will be a short thing and move on to bigger and better things from that, but so thank you. All those in favor of adopting resolution 14-16, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? That motion and resolution carries unanimously. 14-17, please.
Thank you, sir. This resolution would allow us to approve or to carry out an incentive agreement between the RDA and SPS Assets Corporation. SPS is an entity that wants to bring office use to the city at 3217 Decker Lake Drive in the city, which is the current Hollywood Connections property. This is a coup for us as a city as well as a demonstration of the viability of our redevelopment efforts. We're going to be bringing thousands of jobs to the city as well in this project and the associated traffic, which will support the surrounding economic development that is here in the city, which of course is very important to us to make sure that we do maintain that. We do have a small incentive that, if I remember correctly, it's stretched across two years, I could be wrong on that, but in any event, we feel it's a very viable and desirable project, and we recommend it.
Board members, this matter is now before you for any information or motions.
Motion to approve resolution 14-17.
Thank you, Mr. Hune.
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Lang, we have a motion before the body to approve resolution 14-17, is there any discussion to that? I would just, I guess, like to point out that in some ways, this is a good vindication for this body as well as the city council body, and that seeing as how it was maybe not that long ago, certainly within six months to a year ago, we had people in here telling us that the Decker Lake Drive area was not suitable for office-type uses, and here we're going to see thousands of jobs come to the corridor and likely see many more good things result from that, so. Seeing no further discussion, we'll call the question and ask all those in favor to please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That also is approved unanimously, and we'll now turn to the final resolution, 14-18, please.
Thank you, sir. This is another incentive agreement that we are proposing, and also a very good project we're bringing to the city, and also demonstrates the, again, the desirability and the advantages we have in a well-functioning RDA. This is a property which due to our contacts and business communication efforts, we knew that the existing business on the property was leaving the city, and there was, we had not been able to find a solution for keeping them here. And instead of, well, what often happens in municipalities, that business leaving and us not be, and us suffering the economic effects of losing that business, we regularly recruit another business to come into this property, and what is a very prominent corner of our city will remain and improve, there are improvements that will be made to the city, we therefore recommend this incentive agreement as well.
Okay, you've heard the introduction, it's now before you. Mr. Bueller.
Mr. Chair, I move for approval of resolution 14-18.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Hunt, for the second, this motion's now before us, any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That was also approved unanimously. Any other business for the redevelopment agency tonight? Seeing none, the chair will entertain a motion to adjourn. Seeing none, the chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
All those in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
This body will stand adjourned.
Call the ordinance, the West Valley City Housing Authority. Note that we have had an opening ceremony, all members of the body are present. We have one item of business today, which is the approval of the minutes of September 2nd, 2014. I move for approval of the minutes of September 2nd.
Thank you, Mr. Nordfeld.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Hune, we have a motion, any discussion to the minutes? If not, we'll call the matter for a vote. Those in favor of approving the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
That has passed unanimously. Mr. Pile, any communications or report tonight?
No sir, thanks.
And we conclude our business and entertain a motion to adjourn. Have a motion to adjourn, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
This body is adjourned.